Good evening, everyone! Good to see you, please take your seats. We're gonna, we'll actually be standing, because we're gonna start with worship. We can start with praise. He's truly worthy of it, amen, let's sing. You move the mountains. Tell the wind and waves be still. You cast out demons. Don't be empty, soul be filled. But now there's breakthrough. Now there's freedom in your name. You gave us power. And the keys to do the same. Your whole redemption. You made accusers drop their swords. You showed us mercy. With your mighty miracles. And now there's breakthrough. Now there's freedom in your name. You gave us power. And the keys to do the same. Now we proclaim. Wars fall down.
In Jesus' name.
Strongholds break.
In Jesus' name.
We are here.
In Jesus' name.
They're a miracle.
In Jesus' name.
Lord, pour them out.
Oh, you will.
You crushed the darkness. You made a fool of death and bread. Oh, King Jesus. You made rulers out of slaves. And now there's breakthrough. Now there's freedom in your name. You gave us power. And the keys to do the same. Now we proclaim.
In Jesus' name.
Wars fall down.
In Jesus' name.
Strongholds break.
In Jesus' name.
Because we are here.
In Jesus' name.
They're a miracle.
In Jesus' name.
Lord, pour them out.
Oh, you will.
Oh, oh, oh. God, we echo your authority. Come on, sing on, everyone can sing on. Oh, oh, oh. God, we echo your victory. Sing now, oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. God, we echo your authority. Now we proclaim.
In Jesus' name.
Yes, wars fall down.
In Jesus' name.
Oh, strongholds break.
In Jesus' name.
God, we.
In Jesus' name.
They're a miracle.
In Jesus' name.
Lord, pour them out.
Oh, you will.
Oh, oh, oh. God, we echo your authority. Sing now, oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. God, we echo your victory. Come on, give it up! Give it up, give it up! All the glory is in his name. All power is in his name. The victory belongs to him, church. Hallelujah! We honor you, we bless you. We praise you, we worship you. Our King, our God, our Savior. I thank you, God, your hand is not short tonight. To reach out and touch your people. And to meet them at their point of need. I thank you, God, that you're here right now, God. To perform the miracles that we sing about, oh, God. Oh, what is it you cannot do tonight? Oh, we stand in expectancy, oh, God, on what you will do. And we vouch to give you the praise. We vouch to give you the glory. We vouch to give you the honor and the praise. And everyone said, amen, amen. Come on, you're singing well. Keep lifting out that praise. He's truly worthy of it, amen.
Come on, sing, I give you glory. I give you glory. For you brought me through. And now I'm ready for whatever you want to do. I'm moving forward to follow after you. And now I'm ready for whatever you want to do.
It's his presence.
Your presence is an open door. We want you, Lord, like never before.
You tell, you tell.
Your presence is an open door. So come now, Lord.
Welcome, sweet spirit of God.
Like never before. In every season, your grace has been enough. And I'm believing the best is yet to come. The cross before, my walk from this above. And in you, Jesus, the best is yet to come. Your presence is an open door. We want you, Lord, like never before.
You tell, you tell.
Your presence is an open door. So come now, Lord, like never before.
Come on, just welcome, you're the living God. He's all we need tonight, amen, come on!
And I know breakthrough is coming by faith. I see a miracle. And my God made me a promise and it won't stop down. And I know breakthrough is coming by faith. I see a miracle. And my God made me a promise and it won't stop down. I know breakthrough is coming by faith. I see a miracle. My God made me a promise and it won't stop down. I know breakthrough is coming by faith. I see a miracle. My God made me a promise and it won't stop down.
Holy bring it on! We honor you, we love you, Lord!
Your presence, your presence is an open door. We want you, Lord, like never before.
You say it.
Your presence, your presence is an open door. So come now, Lord, like never before.
Hallelujah, hallel. Yes, 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 you're the Lord. It's you, Father, that has come to me. It's you, God, it's you. It's you, Father. Take the whole world and give it to Jesus. Take the whole world and give it to Jesus. Oh, Jesus! Bless you, bless you, bless you. Shendara. Let's go deeper, church. Let's go deeper into the heart of worship. Let your heart truly connect with your God tonight. I will sing of your goodness. I will sing of your love. Though the seasons come quick, you have always been enough. Though the night may get dark, though the wait seems long, you have always been faithful to remind me of your love. For you are good.
In the morning I'll sing.
You are good. In the evening I'll sing. You are good. You are good to me. You have always been patient. You have always been kind. You're consistent through the ages, oh, what a friend and mine. So I remind my soul to bless, standing firm upon you too. Knowing you can outshine, because I've seen what you can do. You are good. Come on, sing with me! In the morning I'll sing. You are good. In the evening I'll sing. You are good. You are good to me. Come on, sing it loud and proud! You're God, he's the best for me. For you are good.
In the morning I'll sing.
You are good.
In the evening I'll sing. You are good. You are good to me.
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. You do, Lord. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Each and every day. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Yes to me, Lord. You keep on getting better, keep on getting... Can I hear a witness? Come on!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better.
Yes, you do, oh!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better.
Yes, you do!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yes, you do!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. For you are good.
Oh, yes, you are!
In the morning I'll sing. You are good. In the evening I'll sing. You are good. You are good to me.
I'm in your favor.
For you are good.
God, I rejoice in you. I delight in my treasure, my life, my heart. God, I'm blessed!
In the morning I'll sing. You are good. You are good to me.
Every day gets better, every day gets sweeter. 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 Come on, can I hear a witness?
Every day gets better. Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better.
I just tweet, Jesus!
Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better.
I'm more than you, oh, God. You're so good, oh, God. What have you done to deserve, oh, God, we bless you!
Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better. Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better. Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better. Every day gets sweeter, every day gets better.
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. My God!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better.
Oh, yes, you do!
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better.
Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Keep on getting better, keep on getting better. Come on! Oh, yes, oh! Shendara. Oh, yes, you do! Oh, yes, you do! Oh, Jesus. Oh, hail King Jesus. Oh, hail the Lord of heaven and earth. Oh, hail King Jesus. Oh, hail the Savior of the world. Oh, hail King Jesus. It's not other. Oh, hail the Lord of heaven and earth. Oh, hail King Jesus. Oh, hail the Savior of the world. My way, you King! Oh, hail King Jesus. Oh, hail the Lord of heaven and earth. Oh, hail King Jesus. Oh, hail the Savior of the world. The world. Let every knee bow before the King of kings. Let every tongue confess that he is Lord. Lift up your shout, let us join with all of heaven singing. Oh! Come on, sing holy! Singing, oh! It's time to cry, holy! I am holy. Oh! I am holy. Holy! Oh! Holy! Come on, sing holy! Singing, oh! It's time to cry, holy! I am holy. I am holy. Are you Lord God almighty? Worthy! Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. You are holy, holy. Are you Lord God almighty? Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. You are holy. Sing. Holy! Are you Lord? We honor you, my God! Oh, glory and honor and glory! We pray, oh, God! We worship you, oh, you! Let's not thank you, Jesus! Let's not thank you, Jesus! Holy! Are you Lord God almighty? Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. You are holy, holy. Are you Lord God almighty? Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. Oh, worthy is the Lamb. Come on! Worthy, let's cry, let's go! Oh, worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb.
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Yes, you are worthy, King of kings and Lord of lords. We bless you, we magnify your name, be glorified, your name, Jesus. Oh, we love you, Jesus, we bless you. We want to be with your shadows in the morning tonight, Jesus. Be praised, be honored, be glorified, be magnified, hallelujah! Oh, glory, 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 glory. Yes, Lord, yes, Lord, yes, Lord, yes, Lord. Oh, we bless you, Jesus, you are wonderful. You are wonderful, you are wonderful, praise God. Amen, amen. Thank you, you may be seated. How true it is that in the morning he was good, and in the evening he is good. Had a wonderful time, it reads this morning. It was good, I said, it was prophetic. His message was prophetic. So get excited for something even tonight, amen. We're not having supper tonight because we want Nicola and her husband read to minister in prayer. And I observed that they very patiently take time with people. We want to give them that time tonight, amen. So get ready. God will touch you in a very, very special way, amen. Hallelujah, yes. Now, next Sunday, the young people are having a fundraiser. You're having a sausage sizzle and something on the barbie, and not really. Whatever there is. So come with some loose change, you want some silent, silent offering type of thing. We're taking on next Sunday morning. Now, tomorrow evening, we have the prayer meeting in Clayton from 7:30 to 8 o'clock. Just half an hour, Thursday, the miracle service here at 7:30. So we just want you to be ready and get excited. Right now, we're going to wait new for your types and offerings. May God bless you. We have two baskets here if you want to give that way. Thank you for those of you that are doing the direct debit. And we have the post facilities as well if you want to take advantage of that. So can I get you to stand again as we wait upon you for your types and offering? It's an honor, it's a privilege to be able to give, amen. Hallelujah, let's stand together. Do you know you've got a song?
And blessed assurance. Oh, what a grace. For I'm prone to wonder. But you're prone to chase. For this is my story. The song that I raise. Sing of your goodness. Oh, my days. All of the promises, all of the praise. All of your people have sung through the ages. No matter the season, the song is the same. What is this? Great is your faithfulness, great is your name. Oh, all of the promises, all of the praise. All of your people have sung through the ages. No matter the season, the song is the same. Great is your faithfulness, great is your name. The great is your faithfulness, great is your name. Oh, great is your faithfulness, great is your name. Oh, great is your faithfulness, great is your name.
Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Father, we give you praise. We thank you once again for the opportunity of being able to give. And Lord, this is for our benefit, this is for our advantage, hallelujah. Because God, you said, when we give, the windows of heaven will be opened. And Lord, we thank you. We are ready to receive our favor, our blessing. Thank you for the great week, oh God, and your favor upon our lives. We thank you and bless you in Jesus' name. Amen, amen, amen. Thank you, you may be seated. Well, you've been waiting for this moment to have, you know, already our ambassador representing our country, Australia, around the world. Not only just as an athlete, but as an ambassador of Jesus Christ, amen. And what an honor it is for us to have Nicola and Reese, Nicola. I think of Nicola, I don't know why, we've got a couple of Nikolas, but Nicola, amen, who's here tonight to share with us. I said, just do as the Lord leads you. I mean, pray for people, do whatever you want, share, preach. So get ready, fasten your seatbelt, but put your hands together as it comes to minister, amen. Praise God.
Wow, thank you so much for having me, Pastor Cedric and church. It is wonderful. This is the first time that as a husband and wife, we went interstate. We've been around the world, but we've never been to Melbourne before. So it's lovely to have today to share. And in my heart, just as we were singing and worship, it's an amazing thing that together as a body of Christ, even when you hear the silence, but there's just the sound of redemption. There's a sound that comes out and it's, and that's what heaven's going to be like, church. Heaven where there's worship surrounding and it's almost you just get caught up, caught up in what God is doing. And I wanted to share my story with you. So I grew up, and if you're wondering again, how tall am I? I'm six foot two, so one hundred and eighty-six centimeters. And when I was ten years old, I was already six foot. Ten, eleven years old, and it was the first time I went into year six. And as I was walking into this brand new school, because my parents took me out of the school I was in because I was bullied because I was so tall, so different. And they sent me there for a good education. And the moment I walked in, I was expecting what I'd always experienced in those eleven years. Being judged for what I looked like appearance wise and being, having to earn my acceptance. And I was good at sport and I thought I could be funny at times. So I thought, no, I can earn their acceptance. And the moment I walked into that school, I was met with a love that I have never experienced in my life. Not only from the teachers, but from the students. And I walked in and this, almost this jealousy came over me of how can somebody love me like this? And they said, we love because Jesus loves us. The first time I'd ever walked into a truly Christian environment. And it was that moment that I experienced and encountered the love of God. And maybe some of you are here for the first time tonight and I sense that same love that's in the room. It is not of this world. This world could never give you a love, even if it's the best marriage or the best relationship between a family member. The love that God gives you transforms you. And this love quit me on this journey of wanting to discover, okay, so who is Jesus? Who is he? And when I started reading the Bible, I started, I didn't just read it as words. I would read it and God would be speaking to me like John three sixteen. For God so loved the world that he gave his one and only son, that whoever believes in him would not perish, but have eternal life. I would read that and be like, wow, he loves me and he's so bold about it. He would tell me in written form, like a love letter. So I consumed the Bible as I was growing up. But this is the thing, you can be in church, you can be surrounded by people and even pursuing God. But sport in my life was still number one. And that was the problem because no matter how good I got in sport, no matter how high the high jumper I was and how good I was, I always didn't feel like I measured up. And that's when you realize that no matter what you do, if you have that performance mindset, like I'm going to earn my way. Even if I got acceptance from people around me and I felt like I got accepted from God in myself, in my truest of hearts, I didn't accept myself for who I was. So I wanted to always go that extra step further and that extra step higher. And okay, so this is also a little crazy story, but when I was eight years old, I got introduced to high jump. And the moment that I got introduced to it, the bar was at maybe ninety centimeters and I cleared it. And I went to the person at the track club and said, what's the Australian record for women, like all together? And at that time it was one meter ninety-eight. And I said, I will be the first woman to jump two meters in Australia. As an eight-year-old, I had that dream. And I don't know if any of you have children here, but even as yourselves, did any of you as children have dreams growing up? Yes. And sometimes as a child, it changes every week. I've got a few friends that have kids and one time they want to be a vet. And the next week I'm like, how's that dream of a vet going? Like, oh no, I'm going to be a ballerina instead. And the next week, I'm going to be an astronaut. And so, you know, it changes. But for me, something of that elusive Olympian best ever in Australia just caught my heart and I never swayed from it. I always pursued it. And it got to the stage of being twenty years old, living in Germany, having an Olympic coach, having an Olympic training facility, having everything I'd ever dreamed of as an eight-year-old. I'd even did a map, a plan for my life and I ticked off every single one of those boxes. And I was there training, but being miserable. Because again, that performance mindset, I was jumping one meter eighty-eight at that stage. So I was still twelve centimeters off. And I was ranked maybe in the top one hundred in the world, but to make the Olympics, that's the top thirty. And so I always felt so far off the measure. And I came to, I came to myself and this is the moment that it clicked to me and it went. The reason why I'm not satisfied right now is because everything in my life is all crystal clean, but God's not in it. I'd left God behind in the pursuit of my dream. And that moment at twenty years old, I can tell you exactly where I was at that exact moment when I just decided, I don't want this anymore, I just want Jesus. That's the only thing that's ever going to satisfy me. That moment, that love that I experienced, even as a school or even as reading the Bible, I knew I needed to get back there. But I'd positioned myself in an environment which was hostile to faith. And maybe some of you are in positions or in communities where you feel like you can't pursue God. I was getting attacked for my faith and persecuted in that particular environment. But the moment that God called my name there, even if there was resistance, I couldn't help but follow him. I couldn't help but chase back after him. So I left it, I left and came to Australia, being willing to give up my sport, giving everything, even the dream that I'd had for twelve years at that stage longer. I'd lived longer living in that dream than living without it. So at that stage, I thought, I'm leaving it, I'm leaving it all behind, but I just want Jesus. I just want him. And I thought, all right, God, and you come to this place when there's just this freedom and it's like you peel off the layer. And that transformation of freedom. And I walked in and this is what it is to seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness. All else is added. And I thought, where are we going, God? What are we going to do now? I feel free. Are you going to send me to the mission fields in Africa or India? Are you going to send me to the universities to preach? And he said, go back to sport. I thought, oh, no, I just, I just left sport. But God said, but do it this time my way. And the moment that I said yes to him, let me tell you, every time I turned up for my training sessions, I no longer did it in order to get to a certain level, in order to perform for other people or for myself, I did it out of the overflow of joy. You saw worship up here. It's not just singing a song. There is an overflow of joy that gets imparted into the heart of every person around you. When I would train, I wouldn't just run, I would run to the best of my ability, not because I had to or to what I wanted to gain, but because there were souls at stake. And I knew if I just ran that little bit faster and I jumped that little bit higher, there might be the opportunity that I get a new platform to share about Jesus. I would go to training every day and just look for people around the track to tell the gospel to. I would post scripture verses on Instagram or Facebook. And if anybody so much as liked it, that was from an athletic sphere, I'd message them straight away and say, come to my Bible study. I'd never even gotten taught how to run Bible studies, but I just felt like there had to be an avenue to share the gospel. This transformation church is something that reinvigorates everything. I'd already been involved in church, I knew the Bible in and out, I'd had a relationship with God, I had testimony. But the moment that I truly seek first the kingdom, like I truly put him as the number one priority. And I didn't have an idol anymore above it, that's when the transformation happened. And that's the click, that's the moment that life all of a sudden just starts bursting. Every morning I woke up and went, God, what are we doing? And I'll say that there is a cost that happens when you seek first the kingdom of God. There will always be resistance, whether you seek him or whether you don't seek him. That's promised on this life. I didn't have a Christian home and I didn't have a workplace, especially in sport, where Christianity is something that you can really be bold about. But I made that decision of he's number one and I will proclaim the gospel, whatever the cost. And I was in that situation and let me tell you, my sporting performances went from glory to glory. And within three months, I went from ranked maybe a hundredth in the world to thirty-second in the world. And I got a call up to say, Nicola, you're the last person to qualify for the world championships. We want you on the next train, next plane to London immediately to compete. And I walked into the airport and I'm like, God, what are we going to do? And I decided, like, I'm only here because I wanted to seek him first. So this trip, it's not about now changing everything or throwing out my competition plan. I'm just going to seek God first and whatever happens at this competition happens. And so the moment I arrived, my best friend also made up my first, her first world championships. And we were there in this hotel that had all of these high-profile athletes and world record holders. And rather than being like a normal twenty-year-old and being a bit overwhelmed by them, I knew I had something to give them. Because that's the thing, you don't be intimidated by anyone or anyone, everyone around you because you carry the King of kings. You have a breakthrough for every single person you meet, whether they're the person that's meant to be below you or the person who's meant to be your idol. Nothing, you have the King of kings and you have the answers. If you have the gospel, you have the key to every single person's breakthrough on this earth. And so I walked into the hotel and I thought, we're going to start doing Bible studies. And if you should have seen me, I was this young Australian girl with these big Caribbean men weeping at the presence of God. I didn't have anything to give them except the presence of God and that was more than enough to give them. And we saw breakthrough. That competition, I came dead last, dead last, didn't even make the starting height, didn't matter, best competition of my life. Because when I realized the things that were going on behind the scene, the ministry, people of these amazing caliber multiple Olympians that I could minister to. And I realized this is my ministry group, the people that were untouchable. Because so many people will see someone in a high position and think they've got it all together. But usually they're the ones that need it the most. Everyone needs the gospel, but not everybody is willing to go the extra mile to reach them. But I encourage you today, be that extra person. Doesn't matter where it is or what your workplace is, where your family lives. I'm sure there's a few people here tonight that might be the only person in your family that is a Christian. And let me tell you, the family can be a mission field as well, workplace can be a mission field. But there will be breakthrough because we know about the goodness of God. These Olympians said, we've never had anybody as an athlete do that before. And I thought, okay, this is a good place to start. Anyway, over the last few years, that was two thousand and seventeen, God then allowed me to really refine what I was doing. I no longer went to training just to reach the person next to me and go, oh, like, can I tell you about Jesus? God gave me dreams for something even bigger, stadium events. Where I compete in stadiums all over the world, that says a job, which is beautiful and you'll see fifty thousand people there. And God shows me and it impacts my heart so deeply, almost moves me to tears every time I walk into a stadium. Because he told me one day, there will be people in stadiums that will hear the gospel. They'll come here for the gospel, look at every single person, every soul that's here. One day, there will be athletes preaching the gospel in the tracks and the stadiums and the competitions. They'll keep the competition lighting, actually, they're going to be covered by the competitions because you will be preaching and bringing even more people in. And there will be amazing altar calls all over the world. When God gives you a dream that is impossible to do by yourself, you know you're in the right position. When God speaks a word that scares you, you have an option of going, I'm going to choose fear or I'm going to choose faith. And like the gospel, you have a decision in that moment to go, am I going to let my doubts and fear overtake me? Or am I going to pray a simple prayer, God, please help me believe? When you understand how good he is, you will have the strength, even if you don't have the faith in that moment. I had the same thing, I was like, God, I don't even know how to speak in front of a person I don't know without my hands shaking. How am I meant to preach in stadiums? But I know how good you are and you're a God that can never lie. So help me have faith, help me believe when I can't believe. And he has so far. It's been beautiful. It's been beautiful. But anyway, so he given me these visions and I thought, God, how am I going to, how am I going to do that? I'm not a high-profile athlete. And God told me, he's like, oh, I've got a master planned in mind. Now, the Olympic Games, I was coming into the Olympic Games in two thousand and twenty, being ranked maybe fifteenth in the world. And then COVID happened and the Olympics got postponed an extra year. And I decided to go over to Europe anyway because there was ministry opportunities and an opportunity as well. In order to keep my financial support from athletics, I had to, I had to go over there and earn money and prize money. And when I was over there, I then had to come back to Adelaide and do quarantine for two weeks. And in those two weeks, I was talking to the Lord and thought, okay, what's our, what's the plan for this next season, God? And He just spoke to me so gently and said, you're going to go for gold. I said, gold? I'm already ten centimeters, maybe even more lo- lower than the girl that is going to get the gold medal. And at that moment, I'm like, God, like you've done before, I don't quite believe you at the moment. But I know that you can't lie and you're such a good God. And I'm going to, I'm going to go towards it as if I'm going for gold. And let me tell you, the amount of effort it was to make the Olympic Games, if it's this much, to try and be an Olympic gold medal. To the roof, it's it's almost three times the amount of work. Because you're not just doing the work to be safe and make yourself ready. You push yourself past comfort zone every single day. I recognise I had to change my thought patterns, my posture, my sleeping, the way I eat, the way I train. The way I socialise, every single thing in my life. But God's worth it. He's worthy of it. And I thought, He's worthy of it. Even if it gets to the point that I'm not gonna reach their God, I will trust you. And I realised, even in my competition aspect, I wasn't as competitive um, in a cutting edge way. I would always get overwhelmed and I was talking to um, one of my sports psychologists who was also a Christian. And we came up with this game plan to me to write in a notebook while I was doing my jumps. And this notebook, I would just write down what I did well and what I didn't do well. And actually stemmed from a weakness to not be able to recollect things in high pressure situations. And this um, this Bible verse encouraged me and it's in two Corinthians twelve. And I'll just read it out to you. It's Paul's vision and his thorn. And he said, I must go on boasting, though there's nothing to be gained by it. I'll go on to visions and the revelations of the Lord. I know a man in Christ who fourteen years ago was caught up in the third heaven. Whether in body or out of body, I do not know, but God knows. And I know that this man was caught up in paradise. Whether in body or out of body, I don't know, but God knows. And he heard things that cannot be told, which men may not utter. On behalf of this man, I'll boast. But on my own behalf, I will not boast, except in my weaknesses. Though I should wish to boast, I would not, I'd be a fool. For I was speaking the truth, but I refrain from it so that no one thinks more of me than he sees in me or hears from me. So to keep me from being conceding, because of the surpassing greatness of the revelations. A thorn was given to me in my flesh, the messenger of Satan to harass me, to keep me from becoming conceited. Three times I pleaded with the Lord about this, that it should leave me. But He said, my grace is sufficient for you, for my power is made perfect in weakness. Therefore, I will boast all the more gladly of my weaknesses, so that the power of Christ may rest upon me. For the sake of Christ then, I am content with weaknesses, insults, hardships, persecutions and calamities. For when I am weak, then I am strong. The amazing thing was that the Olympic Games, let me tell you, to to paint a picture. Most of you are in lockdown, if not all of you. And then at home, it was in lockdown as well. The night that I competed at the Olympic Games was a Saturday night. And the time zone was so perfect that it was eight P M, Saturday night. And everyone's locked up at home and has nothing to do, but to watch the Olympic Games. And not many people like high jump, let me tell you. Most people think it's the one with the pole, pole vault. I'm like, no, it's high jump without it. Australia doesn't really know it much, right? But that night, the Australians had gotten so good that they were in the bronze medal match in basketball. Now, if you don't like athletics, everyone watches basketball, right? The night that I was competing at the Olympic Games. I was going so well that they interrupted the basketball feed to go. Nicola McDermott is going for the gold medal. You should switch over channels now and watch her. Crazy. That particular Olympics, when I think of it, every single detail that I put into God's hand, He knew. He was speaking over me to say, go for gold, a year before I even had the faith to believe I could do it. It was a weakness of mine. The weakness of mine was that I wasn't enough, I wasn't experienced. And, you know, I would list it to God and He goes, but that's where my power can rest upon. Cause the moment that you call it a weakness, it is an invitation then for the Lord's strength to be placed upon it. And I said, Lord, I am your vessel. Do as me as you please. All I've got is 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 what I have. But it's enough for you. And let me tell you, that particular Olympic feed with everyone watching, I was writing in a notebook. Not because it was a clever plan of mine, but because it was a weakness that the Lord had spoken into. And it started gra- grabbing the the eyes of every single person who watched the Olympics. There was billions of people that night watching. So all of a sudden, I wasn't just an athlete that was doing okay. I interested people because they're like, there's something different about her. And when I walked into that stadium, most people crumbled because there's so much pressure around. Or there was disappointment because there was no crowds because of COVID. When I walked into it, I heard the voice of the Holy Spirit joking with me as I was walking in. So I was giggling. And people went, wow, she's really relaxed. It's a mindset tactic. So the people get overwhelmed by her. I was talking to the Lord. I don't even remember half of it. I was just caught up in this, like, just like Paul was saying, caught up in the third heaven. In the moment and the night that I requ- I required the Lord to come through for me because I couldn't do it. People said that, oh, Nicola carried the cross that night and you could see it. But that's not true. The cross carried me that night. And when I was um, writing in my notebook, I just was putting these Bible verses and these stickers all there. Cause I thought, if the cameras decided to zoom in, they'll see it all. And they did. I didn't have to say a word. The gospel was written all out and they were zooming in on it. What is she writing? Oh, there's John three sixteen and the rest of it. And when I competed, I can tell you that there was such a peace upon my life. That I could go in and I could feel the power of the Lord literally lifting me up over the bar. And I could put my one hundred percent in, knowing that in the power of God, that could be multiplied. Sometimes you wanna compare yourself to people around you. But you don't realise that when you have Christ, just like when He multiplied the bread and the fish in His hands. It wasn't the s- the magical bread and fish, it was the power of God in His hands that could multiply it. I look at me and just think, God, I was the one that was rejected from most of the sporting teams because I wasn't good enough. Or I was the one that's like, you're too tall, get out of the photo so it looks normal, you know? Like, the one that was rejected is actually the one that God says, they're mine. And when and when God places you in His hand, He can multiply you to do things that normal people would would deem impossible. And that night at the Olympic Games, I jumped two meters over two, which was a new record, and I got the silver medal. And I had prepared a speech with the Lord for two weeks in this little cardboard room in the Olympic Games in Tokyo. Just talking to the Lord. Imagine if we did this, or if I got the gold medal, I would go for this. And I can tell you, I wasn't disappointed when I didn't get gold. But I was thankful to the Lord that He gave me the strength to believe I could do it. Cause there's no way I would have gotten silver without believing I could get gold. So many of us limit ourselves because we think, oh, I don't wanna ask too much from God. But God has big dreams for us. The moment I walked off that bag, He's like, next time, gold medal, believe it with me. And I had this television camera. And let me tell you, the the amount of people that knew I would short, share the gospel. They had people sent in to tell me, don't share the gospel. If the moment you share Jesus, those te- television cameras are gonna be switched off. And no one's gonna hear it and the glory that you'll have, if you do well, will be stripped away from you. And I thought about it and contemplated it and I just thought, my priority is to seek first the kingdom, not to seek first my own glory. And if they decide to turn off the the T V cameras, the person behind the camera will hear the gospel and hear the good news. And that's enough, because it, Jesus just went after the one, like we heard, He leaves the ninety nine after the one. Even if that one hears it, that is more than having all the T V cameras in the world. But they decided to keep the camera rolling that night. And millions upon millions of people, because they were watching and got interrupted in the basketball, they decided to stay on and. Let's hear what this this high jumper has to say. And when I shared my visions about revival and stadiums, you know what they did? They said, can you tell us more about your faith story? That's, that's something that you just think. In Australia, there is, like, there is power in that. Because they they didn't just ask that because they, they, I did a good performance, but they could see Jesus in everything. And everything you do, when you're carried and you allow God to speak through your weaknesses, there's a power, there's a holiness that is put upon you. That is eternal. Like, there's fruit that's eternal. There's fruit that's for now, right? But there's fruit for eternity. I know there's another Olympic Games and there's another Olympic Games. Let's say in Olympic Games in twenty years' time, when I definitely won't be jumping. Please, Lord, no, in twenty years' time. There's gonna be another Olympian, Olympic medal. And soon I'll be forgotten. But in heaven, that is written as a day, when the angels all were quiet and watched. And when I was there, I was the one that sort of helped her with her training session and things. There's a day for eternity where you actually get to look back and nobody, nothing will ever take that away or tarnish it. Cause it's, it was the Lord that did it. That's what He does. And that's what He does in each of us. There's fruit and there's eternal fruit. And you know, I was um, walking in in Europe this year and we were on a farm in Croatia where my family lives. And there was these trees that had so much fruit, but they looked like they were broken and they were all on the ground. But it was just bu- bursting with fruit. And then there was other trees that were nice and tall and they were bursting with fruit. And I was like, Lord, I didn't know a broken tree could produce so much fruit. And it was um, it was bent over. But I noticed that if I really um, looked at it and tried to get the fruit from it. All the insects could crawl up and and eat it away and and it got destroyed easier. And it's like, the moment that you plant yourself in the Lord, fruit happens. But to grow up into the Lord takes effort. To really pursue Him as your first priority is a decision. But let me tell you, and sometimes you go, but I don't see any difference in my life if I put Him as a first priority or He's just a part of me. I go to church every Sunday, I tick a box. But the fruit that you have can potentially just get taken away by the little things in life. The joy that you have could be taken away by the little things. But when you seek Him first, it's like a tree that's just been growing up taller and taller, where the insects can't um, crawl up anymore. And the fruit stays and it's eternal. And that's the fruit that is worth fighting for. And this year, after an Olympic year, and it was going so well. Something else happened. And I was at the Commonwealth Games. And the whole country, they'd even put me as the poster girl, as these high jumpers are gonna get gold at the Commonwealth Games. And the moment I was in that po- public spotlight, I got an injury and it was a fifteen centimeter tear in my calf muscle. And I was, I got so used to using the platform for the Lord, I thought, this is awesome. Like, God's just gonna now get me from glory to glory and I'm just gonna jump higher and higher. The world record will be gone by next year, you know? It's just, you're on that train and then all of a sudden, tragedy happens. And people went, oh, that must be so hard, you know? Then they were so sorry for me. But you know what was happening behind the scenes? The moment I had the M R I to show me that I had a massive injury. I sought the Lord and I just said, God, what are we gonna do? Do you want me to still jump? Because I know He heals. I've seen it a thousand times before. We even had prayer meetings that I was running in the Commonwealth Games where we were, we were seeing healings. It gets to the point where supernatural becomes the natural. Like, healings is just, I don't even go to the doctor first, let's just get it healed, right here, right now. But the Lord just said, I want you to rest this time. And He showed me a face. And it was a face of a girl that um, I'd learnt her story, o- only a few weeks, um, only a few days before. And I invited her to my prayer meetings. It was a girl who had fought to try and make the Olympic Games. Did everything in her ability and then it got taken away. And she decided, God, I'm giving up on sport. And it sounded just like my story. And God called her back to sport and said, do it my way. And she just had the best year and was going from glory to glory. And I'd seen her in um, in the dining hall and I'd re- I ran up to her because I could see Jesus in her face. And I asked her a testimony and she was shocked. She was like, how do you know I was Christian? I was like, I could see it. You you look like Him. Anyway, and she had been, she had just been on this whole journey. And she was just rece- like, she was on the brink of a breakthrough, on the brink of becoming a professional athlete. On the brink of becoming um, managed, like, it was just, she was just on that moment of. She just needed this one big thing to happen to her and then she'd get the breakthrough. And you know, in that moment, when I was injured, God showed me her face and said. It's time for you to rest and it's her time to rise up. And so I called a prayer meeting with all of the Christian women that I was fellowshipping with. And I went to her and I just, I gathered everyone around her and in tears, I said, I'm not gonna be competing tomorrow. But it is even better that I'm not competing because you will shine. And I believe with everything, I got a prophetic word for her, that you'll be on the podium. Tomorrow is your breakthrough. I believe it with my whole being. And she's like, yeah, yeah, thank you. Are we having another pray- prayer meeting the next day? I was like, listen to me, you're going to be on the podium and that's the exact time of our usual prayer meetings. No prayer meeting tomorrow. We're all going to your competition to to cheer you on. I'm gonna be on the sidelines and you will be on the podium. God had given me such a joy that I could see someone else's breakthrough. And you know, the next day she got on the podium, she got third place. And I can tell you, if I was competing, that probably wouldn't have happened. And I just thought, the goodness of God, the glory of God that He gives us, even in the points where we think our our low points are happening. There was so much joy of expectation because I know how good He is. I had an injury that was meant to be six to eight weeks in recovery. Within three weeks. I was, I got another M R I and it showed complete healing. Complete healing. And they said, oh, just because it's healed doesn't mean that you're gonna be able to jump on it. But you know what? The next week I jumped on it and I got on the podium again on this international competition. And people said, this, we could have never imagined this. You must be a good healer. I said, no, but I know a good healer. And I just think, what a beautiful thing, that the God, the God who helps you in the in the low times. Is also the one that celebrates with you on the mountains. I realised at the Commonwealth Games that He had brought me to the heights just for this moment, to lay it down. He'd brought me just, like, so far, He wasn't going to forsake me. It was actually a stage where I could then grow spiritually in that particular moment. I didn't see my glory being taken away, because that's impossible, because He was being glorified. And when I was cheering her on on the sidelines, I could tell you. I I jumped out of my seat to the point where like, you know, the seats then flap back up and I fell, I fell over in the sta- it didn't even matter. I was just so happy for her. And then the television went, look, here's Nicola cheering on her competitors, even when she's injured. And it marked them, maybe even more than my success or my gos- the sharing the gospel. They could see the gospel transformation in my life. And that's what God does. He gives you an authenticity that is so precious that the world is not, they can't understand it. They can't physically understand how you can have this much joy without knowing the man of joy, the man of peace, Jesus Christ. And I just think, what a powerful thing it is to know Him. What a powerful thing it is to have Him as Lord. And you know, there's this saying that um, Brooke Elijah Wood, she's a worship singer, that she said, so many people, when they meet her, they say. You know, well done, like, you're you're doing amazing for the kingdom. And she says, it's like they're throwing flowers upon the stage. And then every day she gets to then pick up the flowers and gives Jesus a bouquet. And you know, with the Olympic Games, so many people all over the world got to hear the gospel and my testimony. And I got used to last year, just giving Jesus these big boo- bouquets and going like, look how much glory you've given. And I was walking in Switzerland um, just before I competed with a broken calf muscle and could um, get on the podium. And I was like, Lord, I'm so sorry that I didn't have so um, the same amount of bouquets this year for you. Like, I'm, you're worthy of more than that, but I wasn't able to perform for that. You know what he said? He's like, my daughter, you didn't give me flowers and bouquets this year. You gave me souls. So many people got saved in the prayer meetings that never got publicised or never got promoted. And he said, how much more valuable to me are the souls of my children? And he said, how much more valuable to me are the souls of my children than the accolades or the praise of anyone else? And I was in this cornfield, and I just, the, the, the corn and stuff, it didn't, the wind didn't blow into it, but I just felt this cool breeze just go through my entire body. And I just felt the Father's love just, like, flow in through me. And that's the Holy Spirit, and he just comes upon you in such a mighty way, in those moments when you just realise just how good he is. Because sometimes we formulate God, it's like, oh, I experienced him in this way, or like, when I was this successful, and then you try and replicate it. But God isn't formulated like that, he's a father, he just wants relationship. Every single one of us just needs to have that connection with him. And it doesn't matter what you do or where you are. When you have him, you have everything. He gives you a power and a sound mind out of his love to do, then be able to do things that physically people said that you would never be able to do. You know, I, I didn't get selected onto these programmes because people never saw the, the potential of me being a medalist, ever, growing up. It wasn't until last year that all of that changed. But God saw it, and he's like, help, I will help your unbelief, you just need a partner with me. And I would give up every type of title that I've had. That medal, it's at home somewhere, it doesn't matter compared to the moment I got to share it with him. And if I got gold at the next Olympics, but I didn't do it out of his strength, it wouldn't have been worth it. And I'll say that, like, performance and appearance-wise of having everything all together, if I had all of that, but I didn't get to experience it with Jesus, it wouldn't have been worth it. But when you get to partner with the Lord, even in the victories, but also in the trials, there's something that happens, and it's in Romans five, verse four, and I just wanna read it out to you. Says this, "Not only that, but we rejoice in our sufferings, knowing that suffering produces endurance. Endurance produces character, and character produces hope. And hope does not put us to shame, because God's love has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who has been given to us, he's been given to us." And every moment that we have, that there is, there is a barrier, or there's resistance, there's suffering, there's trials, there's something ahead of you, or God asks you to do something that's way beyond your comfort zone, that's a trial right there. But if you go, you know what, I know how good he is, I know his goodness, I know that he is love. He doesn't try and love, he is love. And if I know that, then it gives me endurance to persevere through it. And you know, when you persevere through it, it produces a character in you that shines like the sun. It says that we are shining, shining like a hill, a city on a hill. And people will see the light of God within us, and it produces hope. And hope will never put us to shame. You will never, ever be put to shame when you're doing it with the Lord. The world will try and shame you, but heaven is rejoicing over you. And even as you sleep, God is doing things in your life that you would never, ever believe, even if someone told you. Because of the love of God that has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who's been given to us. And that's what I think tonight that I've got on my heart, is what you're doing in each of you. I just feel like that girl that walked into the school for the first time in year six, where God's love surrounded me so tangibly, I couldn't help but give my whole life to him. And it took a journey to fully know what surrender looked like. But there was a decision, and that decision was the most important decision of my life. I didn't get any more strong from it, but I received God's strength, which is far, far greater than anything else that I could possibly imagine. But in that particular moment, within a moment, your life can change forever. And I believe that there's some of you here tonight that have a decision ahead of you. A decision to make Jesus not only your Lord, but your number one. And you know, the Lord is about covenant. I'm just married to one man, one man, like, that's all I need, I've got the Lord. Plenty, plenty to do with that. But right there, it's like, there's a covenant relationship with the Lord, and it's just one. And I've seen it time and time again, people getting to that stage where they are so close to the Lord, but then they've put other things in their life, they've put other idols, they've tried to mix Jesus with other things. And all of a sudden, they start complaining that Je, Jesus wasn't enough for them, so they went on to other things. And it's almost like the fruit tree that was ready, it was planted, there was fruit growing, and then it all got washed away, because they got caught up with things. I've seen it time and time again, and it breaks my heart, because there's so much more in God. There is so much more, all you need is one. You have one Lord, you have everything, you have Jesus, you have everything. You have the Lord of life, you'd have everything in this life and the life to come after. When you have Jesus, you don't need finances, because he provides for you, let me tell you. When you have Jesus, you don't need a different relationship status, because he completes everything for you. When you have Jesus, you don't need another job in order to feel like you can be living up to a life that's worthy. You are worthy, whatever your life looks like, because it is a holy life. And it's a life that will be written in the book of days forever. And there's a decision that's made in that moment to say yes to Jesus. And that yes for my life has looked so different. And I've been able, just like the bread that God, God blessed, and then fed out to thousands of people. It was just such a small thing, but in his hands impacted and sustained lives all over. When God saw me and just said, you know what? I'm going to use you to be able to bless people that you haven't even met before, in countries that you don't even know the names of, in cities that you don't know exist, but yet I will put you into those places to minister the gospel to. And he can do the same in you, if not greater, actually, yeah, much greater. So I wanna have this moment today, just while the band's coming up, to give people the opportunity tonight, that maybe you've placed yourself here and you're invited, and even those of watching online, that tonight is a night, just like any other night, but it can be your night. A night where you can decide for the first time, or decide in finality, to seek first the kingdom and to seek Jesus. And it's a decision, let me tell you, that is something that will impact every single thing that you do for the rest of your life, because there's purpose attached to it. You're not doing things out of the sake of doing them, or doing things in order to measure up. You do things because there's a holiness. And the moment that I said yes to Jesus, I've made tens of thousands decisions after that, but nothing was more precious than that one. Nothing more impacting. So with every eye closed, I just pray. But before I pray, if there's anybody that tonight hasn't had the opportunity before to make that decision to seek Jesus as the Lord of their lives, I just want you to raise your hand, and we'll pray for you. Thank you, Jesus. And I wanna give a second opportunity as well, for those who are requiring a breakthrough from the Lord. If you could raise your hands, thank you, Jesus. Amen. What we're going to do is, I wanna invite my husband and I, and up, and we wanna pray over people for breakthrough and for deeper intimacy with the Lord. And after our prayer, I'll invite Pastor Cedric to do as ever as you wish. Let's pray. Well, Lord Jesus, we honour you as the Lord of our lives. Lord Jesus, we thank you. We thank you for what you did on the cross, that it was final, it was complete, it was beautiful. Lord Jesus, we thank you that by your death and resurrection, we live a new life. We live a life of abundance, we live a life that thrives, a life of eternal purpose. And Jesus, I pray right now over every single person that is requiring a breakthrough, is requiring something to help their unbeliefs. Lord, I pray in your mighty name that you would instill faith into the room tonight. Holy Spirit, I pray that you come in with a mighty way, we welcome you here tonight, we welcome your presence. God, I just pray that through your spirit, like a wind, just comes upon each of us and gives us hope to dream again. A breakthrough. Lord, I thank you that suffering produces perseverance, perseverance produces character, and character produces hope, because your love is here. Your love sustains us. We choose your love, we choose your love over our families, we choose your love, God, as the number one. We pray that we will see redemption, we will see revival in our workplaces. We pray for full saved tra, family trees in your mighty name, Lord. We thank you, God, that you are worthy to be praised, and you write testimonies out of our trials. And I pray that you would be glorified in our lives, God, we just want you to be glorified. We're not interested in the success, we're not interested in the accolades, or the possessions that will pass away, we just want you, God. I pray for a fresh touch of heaven tonight, that every one of us experiences more of your presence, Jesus, because you are worthy to be praised, Jesus, you are worthy to be praised. You brought us to the heights just for this, that may, we may know you and proclaim you. And I pray right now that your spirit will come upon us, and that breakthrough, 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 breakthrough would be happening in families, in lives, in workplaces, in belief systems, that it breaks through would be happening in your mighty name. We honour you and we love you, Jesus. We pray this in your mighty name, amen.
Why don't we stand together? Tonight, I believe it's your moment for that breakthrough. We'd like to invite you, whenever you're seeking God, for you're seeking for a breakthrough, God has brought you here to give you that breakthrough. Secondly, also, I believe it's making the choice between the lesser and the greater. Okay, very forcefully tonight, seek first the kingdom of God. The lesser is not the important thing, the lesser will always be less. But the important thing is seeking first the kingdom of God. Lord, what you have to do, come tonight and surrender to God. Come tonight in your sicking body, hallelujah. We heard here about God, a healing God. Leave your seat and come, as the dinar leads us in a song, thank you, Jesus.
I just want to speak the name of Jesus over every heart and every mind. Because I know there is peace within your prayers. I speak Jesus. I just want to speak the name of Jesus till every dark addiction starts to break. Declaring there is hope, there is freedom. I speak Jesus. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. And I just want to speak the name of Jesus over fear and all anxiety. To every soul attracted by depression, I speak Jesus. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Greatly shouted. Shout Jesus from the mountains, Jesus in the streets. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name of Jesus. Shout Jesus from the mountains, Jesus in the streets. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name of Jesus. Shout Jesus from the mountains, Jesus in the streets. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, Jesus. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Shout Jesus from the mountains, Jesus in the streets. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, Jesus. Shout Jesus, shout Jesus. Shout Jesus from the mountains, Jesus in the streets. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, Jesus. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, the light of fire. Burn like a fire. Your name is power. Your name is life. Your name brings life. Break every stronghold. Shine through the shadows. Burn like a fire. Burn like a fire. Burn like a fire. Burn like a fire. Fight my battles. This is how I'll 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 fight my battles. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how, oh, this is how. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how I'll fight my battles. This is how. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you, Jesus. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded. Sing it like you believe it. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded. The angel of the Lord has come. The angel of the Lord has come. He's surrounding you. He's with you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you, Jesus. It may look like I'm surrounded, but I'm surrounded by you. Feet doesn't live here no more. Feet doesn't live here no more. Cause your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. Shame doesn't live here no more. Shame doesn't live here no more. When your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. No feet. Feet doesn't live here no more. Feet doesn't live here no more. When your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. No shame. Shame doesn't live here no more. Shame doesn't live here no more. When your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. Condemnation no more, since lost all control, I am set free. By your glory and grace, you broke every chain, I am set free. Your name, Jesus. Be running to your name. Your breath starts to heal and deliver. And set me to make you new. Your name, Jesus. Be running to your name. Your name brings life and victory. Your name brings healing to me. Feet doesn't live here no more. Feet doesn't live here no more. Your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. Shame doesn't live here no more. Shame doesn't live here no more. When your name was spoken, your love brought healing to me. Condemnation no more, since lost all control, I am set free. By your glory and grace, you broke every chain, I am set free. For your name, Jesus. Your name, Jesus. Jesus, your name, your name brings healing to me. Your name, Jesus. Running to your name. Find comfort and strength. Jesus, your name, your name brings healing to me. I am free, I am free. These chains have no hold on me. I've been healed, hallelujah. I am free, I am free. These chains have no hold on me. I've been healed, hallelujah. I am free, I am free. These chains have no hold. I've been healed, hallelujah. Your name, Jesus. Your name, Jesus. Jesus, your name, your name brings healing to me. Sing of his name. Your name, Jesus. Your name, Jesus. Jesus, your name, your name brings healing to me. Your name, Jesus. Your name, Jesus. Jesus, your name, your name brings healing to me.